We will now move to the first question from the league and we will start with you, candidate Yusuf, followed by candidate Cook and then candidate Parker. Please tell us what specific skills you bring to the school board that will enhance its functioning?
Thank you for the question. A specific skill that I think is valuable is emotional intelligence. I am a doctoral candidate at the State and Area's University of Minnesota in Twin Cities and my dissertation specializes in accounting and finance. However, my specialization is emotional intelligence. Now, emotional intelligence is a skill that allows individuals to understand those who they work with in teams, try to understand how people speak, and try to understand where they're coming from. Instead of jumping to conclusions or being pushed by political agendas or being pushed by the environment, emotional intelligence skills will become useful in mitigating a lot of the problems our students face. And this scholarly skill and my ability to manage projects in terms of emotion will help me be a successful addition to the board.
Thank you, candidate Parker. I'm sorry, candidate Cook.
Yes, so in terms of a specific skill, I am a lawyer. I've been in practice for 12 years. I'm an intellectual property counsel and currently serve as associate general counsel for intellectual property at the Nielsen Company. I've been working remotely since we moved to Rochester. I am very familiar with analyzing and revising policy. I'm a skilled negotiator. I'm no stranger to complex negotiations with a lot of money on the line. And I think that's important, but maybe my most important attribute that I can bring to the board is a parent's perspective. I have four children in Rochester Public Schools going from kindergarten to seventh grade. It's not hard for me to be invested in the future of Rochester Public Schools. It comes naturally to me because I know where my kids are going to be in the next 12 years.
Thank you. Candidate Parker, your response.
So what I can bring, I had 46 years in at Mayo Clinic Rochester and it's a very highly skilled place to work. And I was training fellows for their time in the cardiac area. I was very involved in the committee services there. We did several things. And I've been a student as I went back to school for several different things, cardiac and surgery and many things. So I've been involved in the schools, my kids have been in the schools, and my grandkids are still in the schools. So I have reason to make sure things are going well for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next question will come from the Post Bulletin and candidate Cook will go first, followed by candidate Parker and then candidate Yusuf.
Equity has been both a controversial topic as well as a major initiative in RPS. What are your thoughts on the subject and how would it impact your work as a school board member?
I think the focus on equity by the school district in the last, the last five years, really, you could go back to the, the report from the Department of Education Office of Civil Rights and the consent decree with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights that followed. And the, the increased focus on positive behavioral supports in the schools that came about because of that. And then the drafting of the equity policy that followed from that. And then the recent hire of the diversity, the Director of Diversity Equity and Inclusion and the several equity specialists throughout the district. Why is this important? Because we have so much to gain as a community by focusing our attention on where we can make the most gains. And we know in our schools, in Rochester Public Schools, just as in nationwide trends, there is, we have not achieved equity in conveying opportunity to our students. That is the mission, is centering the student and conveying opportunity aggressively to the students that will benefit from it.
Thank you very much. And candidate Parker, would you like to respond?
Equity is a controversial statement. Does equity mean equality? Equality, equal in opportunities? Or does that mean we're going to keep everybody on the same level, capping any of our specially gifted students? And then leaving behind any of the other remedial students? And when and where should we apply these? I don't think we need to force outcomes. We need to create the outcomes by giving everybody the same chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will come from Rochester. I'm sorry. Candidate Yusuf, please give your response.
Thank you. Equity and equality are often interchanged. Learning in my doctoral program, I think the central issue here is giving access to everyone at a level that is equal to them. So if you have a student who wants access to education in terms of giftip, you provide those resources. If you have another individual who wants services and mental health, ability to read better, better equipment for them to see better, you give them access as well. So the goal here is to give equal access, but also equal opportunity. And I think equity is one of the central points in the school system and that's something that is at the top of my chart. And when it comes to the district budget, that is something I want to advocate for, to have those resources and abilities for all students.
Thank you, candidate Yusuf. Are there any rebuttals? Candidate Cook?
Yes, I wanted to address the, the statement from candidate Parker that seemed to suggest that the pursuit of educational equity somehow implies that there's a zero-sum game, that providing opportunity to one group necessarily takes it away or diminishes the opportunity conveyed to another group. I fundamentally reject the notion. I think it's, it's absolutely untrue and the research has borne this out, by the way. For one micro example of this, students that have had a single black male teacher at any point in their elementary education have better educational outcomes across the board, across demographic breakdowns.
Thank you very much. Our next question will come from the Rochester Area Chamber. Candidate Yusuf, you will go first, followed by candidate Cook and candidate Parker.
Good evening, candidates. The education experience students receive in the school district plays an essential role in the development of our community's future workforce. What do you see as opportunities for Rochester Public School District to support the development and career awareness of that future workforce?
In my nonprofit work and experience, I realized career development is something that's very vital. When I was going through the school system and by the time I got to high school, I wasn't unsure at what I wanted to do for a career. I had to talk to a lot of teachers. A lot of my peers had this figured out due to the resources that they had. I had several profound teachers that helped me through it, but I want to make committees and policies and contribute to them that allow students to explore careers when they're done with fifth grade. We're not going to force them to go into a certain career, rather we'll give them the options, the opportunities, and if they're interested in health, we have a world-class hospital here. If they're interested in technology, we have schools that will do that for them. And having an experiment in a similar way, we do field trips and now with the capabilities of technology, I believe we can contribute to better career decision-making and lighten off our career goals.
Thank you. Candidate, your response, please.
Yes, I think vocational training, post-secondary opportunities are absolutely important. Hardly anyone would disagree with that. And in Rochester, we're so excited to have the innovative P-Tech programs here that allow our high school students to pursue post-baccalaureate training in information technology and in healthcare. But I'd go even a step beyond that in terms of the effect of RPS on our local economy. And that is that the ability to attract and retain a world-class workforce in today's mobile worker environment, I'm a great example of this, but I know plenty of young professional families that very deliberately decide whether they're going to align themselves with their castor lot in Rochester and align themselves with the Mayo Clinic, or take one of a dozen other options out there. And a world-beater public school system is a game changer. It, it creates a new paradigm where we are a destination not just for a medical center, but for educational excellence.
Thank you. Candidate Parker, your response.
Would you repeat the question, please?
Yes, happy to. The education and experience students receive in the school district plays an essential role in the development of our community's future workforce. What do you see as opportunities for the Rochester Public School District to support the development and career awareness of that future workforce?
Well, I think that really we have the opportunity to not only show off our technical tradespeople and train people accordingly to what their interests are. We also have the ability to get people started in early college courses when they're excelling. We have many partners, which is a very good testament to the work that's been done over the years. Partners with businesses in the community, not just Mayo Clinic, but many others. And I think we should pursue those.
Thank you very much. Our next question is going to come from the audience and the first response will be from candidate Parker, followed by candidate Yusuf, and the third response from candidate Cook. The Minnesota Department of Education shows that Rochester Public Schools has a significantly more diverse student body than average, coupled with substantially less diverse teaching staff than state average. What, if anything, do you think RPS can do to increase teacher diversity? Candidate Parker?
Well, one thing we can do to increase the diversity of our teaching staff is to make sure that we're getting out the word that we would like them here. I think that we can support our teachers even better than we have been. There's certainly room for improvement on that, but that just, we have a welcoming community here. I love our community. And there's already diversity at Mayo and many other places. No reason why we can't have diversity here.
Thank you. Candidate Yusuf, your response.
I believe diversity has to be intentional. And we have a student body that is diverse and representative. You need teachers and staff to also be diverse. When I had teachers in my school that were of different ethnicities and different skill sets, I felt comfortable and I was able to teach and learn better and to relate with them. My first experience in education was similar to that of the European system where you have to pass a state exam when you're done with eighth grade or fifth grade and then pretty much knew your trajectory and that exam pretty much decides everything. But in this country, I realized there's a lot of opportunity for education and a lot of ways to express your skills and ability to learn. And I think diversity needs to be intentional and we need to find a solution where we can diversify our staff through better recruiting purposes.
Thank you. And candidate Cook?
Yeah, I, look, I, diversity does need to be intentional. As a, as a member of the school board, I, I think the number one thing that I could do is just continue to message that this is important. It's important for our community, it's important for our kids. Our kids are the ones that benefit. Our kids benefit when they have teachers and curriculum that reflect them. Okay? And so, you know, do I have the greatest ideas on how to crack this nut better than any other school district in Minnesota? No, not really. Some of the metro area school districts have done a little better job than we have in Rochester. I think we ought to look at what they're doing, but common sense would suggest that that community is viewed as more welcoming to teachers of color. And so, you know, maybe we have work to do right here in making sure that we are a welcoming community for teachers of color. We can work and support the Teachers of Color Employee Resource Group. So, you know, those are some of the things that I would focus on.
Are there any rebuttals? The next question also comes from the audience. Candidate Cook, you'll go first, followed by candidate Parker and then candidate Yusuf. What has been your personal experience with student discipline, including tardiness? What would you advocate for in handling discipline problems?
My personal experience would have to go back to, oh, I think I had some tardiness as a sophomore in high school. But, you know, look, the, the school board's role is to approve the, approve the student manual and make sure that the, the policies and the discipline policies that are spelled out there are clear and that the, the students and, and, sorry, and that the teachers have the support needed to implement the positive behavioral supports and to, and, you know, ensure that they understand that from the school board's perspective, building those intentional relationships with students is so critically important to achieving the climate in our schools that we want, which is welcoming and conducive to learning.
Thank you. Candidate Parker, your response.
My personal experience, I had a son who just could not get up in the morning. He would have friends coming over and getting him up and saying, "Come on, you're going to graduate with us." And he benefited from evening class instead of day class. So there are opportunities, there's things, there are solutions for, for different areas of problems. Not everybody works on the same clock. So I think that it's, it's good that we can work together, parents, teachers, school board that are making these policies. And I think there's, there's plenty of room for taking care of other discipline problems rather than just tardiness.
Thank you. Candidate Yusuf?
My personal experience in disciplinary action comes from some of the research that I've done. And tardiness from an educational perspective shows that you're excited or you're serious about what you're doing. When someone invites you to come to somewhere, you want to be there in time. And if you're not there in time, you inform the party, say, "Hey, something happened, I'm on my way." It shows that you're interested and you value the participation of that event. When it comes to school, students want to learn and educate and parents want their children to learn. And I think setting expectations that are clear and direct can help students succeed. Another way of solving this problem is positive reinforcement. Showing students the more you come to class, how it will impact your grade positively. What we've seen is, "Hey, you've been tardy. You missed this assignment. This happened to you. It's on your report card." It's just going to make people go down the spiral. So positive reinforcement can really help them. Say, "Hey, my grade is going up because I came to class."
Thank you very much. The next question from the audience will go first to you, candidate Yusuf, then candidate Cook, and number three will be candidate Parker. If you were on the school board, how would you include teachers, those who work most closely with our children, in decision-making? So, candidate Yusuf?
When it comes to decision-making, I've learned from the School Board Academy that our number one or only employee is the superintendent. If we have clear expectations of the superintendent and he's aware of our intentions and we reflect what the community needs, the superintendent would be supported to fulfill and make that connection with the teachers. The teachers are welcome to voice their concerns and through the superintendent and through our policies and procedures and through those services, we'll be able to provide the resource that the teachers need. Teachers can always contact us in whatever way that's appropriate for them and we'll always have a listening ear. As an individual candidate, I'm willing to listen to the whole story and the issue and understand the whole, understand where the problems are coming from and how we can provide a solution. And I will work with my fellow peers to make sure these agendas and problems are solved in an effective and impactful way.
Thank you. Candidate Cook, your response?
You know, for opportunities to include teachers in decision-making, I, I think that the most important thing is to make sure that the teachers' voices are being heard. And I, I expect that a lot of that comes through the school board meetings and through the, the presentations that are made as part of the school board meetings at the direction of the superintendent. But, you know, those informal channels are so important. That's a big part of how the school board does the job of synthesizing the gestalt of the community. And the teachers are a very important stakeholder. They, they can't, they necessarily can't be every side of every issue, but they're a very important stakeholder. So I would absolutely want to include their voice. I know several teachers that I think I have very good relationships with and I would just look to build on those and invite others.
Thank you. Candidate Parker, your response?
Yes, well, according to the Wilder Research Study that was taken, principals and teachers have felt very left out of any decision-making processes going on, just handed, "This is what we're doing" and expected to do it. Since they do work with the children closely and know their students and how their school is running, it would be beneficial to get their input beforehand. So that's what I think that would, should be done, not just in a community-type forum, but to actually have a sit-down with the principals, with the teachers who are working with the students. Thank you.
Our next question is coming from the Post Bulletin and we'll go first to you, candidate Parker, then candidate Cook, and then candidate Yusuf. I'm sorry, candidate Yusuf will go second and candidate Cook will go third. So Parker, Yusuf.
It's been mentioned that the school board's one employee is the superintendent. Having said that, what do you see as the optimal working relationship between the school board and the superintendent?
Well, I think working with the superintendent is getting, you know, we're to provide policies for him to implement. So having good policies is number one, so that he can make those guidelines that are needed. And we can all get together with the rest of the staff to make sure that it's implementable in the schools. There's maybe one, there is, maybe there isn't a one-size-fits-all. Maybe some of the schools can actually benefit from having a little different tweak on some of these policies and rules. The politics are very general, so that wouldn't be a difficult thing to do.
Candidate Yusuf, your response?
Yes, the superintendent is the employee of the school board. However, the role of the school board is to tell what policies are in place and then the superintendent figures out the how through the committees, through the connections he has with the principals and the teachers in the school district. If you want to give more flexibility, I think it's our, our part to work with our legislators to provide policies that can help us, help us, help our students. And one way to do that is to understand the issues of the superintendent and the, and the students and the teacher and draft the policy and then use that and present it to legislators and see if those policies can be implemented. Yes, there is room for opportunity and change and that's what the school board is here for, but the community will play a big part in this. We want to work together with the community so that we can find the best opportunity for our students.
Thank you. And candidate Cook, your response?
Yeah, so the, the school board is ideally a body that's providing governance oversight. That means approving budgets and, and I suppose technically there is, you know, the annual job performance evaluation of both itself and of the superintendent. And I think that's right, that the, the school board is there to provide the what within the lane that the legislature has set out for it. The superintendent in leveraging their expertise provides the how. But I'll tell you, in the boards that I'm familiar with in corporate America, a functional board and executive relationship is one of continuous advice and continuous feedback. And that's, that's what I would look to be providing as one-seventh of a school board, which is what a single member of a school board is. My advice doesn't carry the weight of the school board, but it helps to guide the superintendent on tackling the challenges ahead. So that's what I'd look to do.
Thank you. Our next question will come from the chamber and the first response will be from candidate Cook, followed by candidate Parker, and then candidate Yusuf.
Thank you. Taking a little bit more of a long-term outlook of things, we've talked about many things that, you know, are key priorities now, but looking ahead two to four years, as Rochester continues to grow, what do you anticipate as key challenge, as a key challenge for the school district?
Well, the one that jumps right out is the, the budget challenges. You know, right now, the, the forecasted budget is not particularly rosy for the next five years and it's sort of a perfect storm of reductions in enrollment tied to the pandemic, combined with bringing online some new schools right at the same moment. And, and frankly, with a legislature that has failed to keep up with the cost of providing public education. And the districts like Rochester, but really throughout the state, have been caught in the middle. And so, you know, there's a, absent a change in direction from the legislature, there's some tough decisions ahead for Rochester. Expanding revenue has got to be on the table and something that is very seriously considered. But, you know, otherwise, I think transparency is key, communicating what the, what the stakes are, so that people understand what these challenges mean and how they translate into our children's education.
Thank you. Candidate Parker, your response?
Yes, I, I do think that some of the long-term outlooks should be, some of the budget with the $23 million deficit, that's going to be hard to overcome, plus going ahead and paying for the new or renovated schools that we've done. There's some suggestions that we're going to significantly increase our property taxes and that's something that is going to be difficult for most of our community. Academics is another area that's going to be long-term with going from an 80% proficiency down to a 73% proficiency in 2016, 2017, as reported in Post Bulletin. And now we're down to a 40% math proficiency and a 50 to 55% reading proficiency. I think it's, it's going to take a little time to bounce back from that.
Thank you. Candidate Yusuf, your response?
I think having a good strategy is something that's important. In my MBA, especially as in strategic management, and when it comes to the budget, I believe a digital strategy is important. We have a lot of buildings, we have a lot of students, enrollment is changing throughout time, but as technology moves forward into artificial intelligence and other resources, I believe investing in digital infrastructure that can provide each of our students different ways of learning can help us reduce costs and leverage these new technologies. Yes, as a learned corporate teachers and the students, but in the end, it will provide individualized education where a student may not be proficient in a certain area in math, these programs, similar to like Alexa, can really help you hone down your skills and focus on the areas or the basics that you need so you can succeed.
Thank you. There's a rebuttal. Candidate Cook?
Yeah, and the, the other thing, five years hence, that I'd like Rochester Public Schools to be known of, known at, for, is the best place for third graders to learn to read with proficiency. And, you know, in Rochester, we can do this. We're only a few years off of, coming off of the Sense Deep Bump, Lucy Colkin's whole language reading instruction format. We've recently introduced phonemic awareness instruction in the Hagerty system, but there is so much more that we can do. Let's get to it.
Thank you. The next question comes from the audience and the first response will be from candidate Yusuf, followed by candidate Cook, and then candidate Parker. Should the school board pursue a referendum to address their budget issues? Why or why not? Candidate Yusuf?
I would say that should be allowed. I would say that should be a last resort. Referendums can be used as a way to increase funding and solve budget issues. But that is not the fault of the community, but rather better work towards our policies and our legislation. Put an effort into those kind of systems will prove impactful. So that is why it's very important to vote and participate in your public system and voting and getting your voice out. A referendum can cause unboosted trust to a lot of people and is not always guaranteed. So instead of using that as the priority, it should be used as one of the last resorts until we exhaust all avenues financing and other resources.
Candidate Cook.
Yeah, so the school district can't be in the business of pursuing a referendum on its own, but it should absolutely provide information to our community so that they understand what the stakes are and they understand how far a referendum could go. Look, in Rochester, for a $200,000 house, your property taxes that go to the school, Rochester Public Schools have not increased in any significant way over the last 10 years. We are so far from parity in Rochester compared to other large districts that there is a lot of room to expand. But here, let me tell you the scary part. Even if we did that, even if in Rochester, the operating referendum was passed, everybody got on board, and everybody was excited that there was going to be more revenue for our schools, there would still be problems because the legislature has so significantly failed to keep up with the cost of education. So yeah, I think it's got to be on the board, I think that the, or on the table, excuse me. I think that it is incumbent on the board to the point of being irresponsible to not provide that option and that information to the voters.
Thank you. Candidate Parker, your response.
Again, I agree with Candidate Yusef. I think it's one of the last things that we have on our plate here for putting a referendum out. I think people, if everything going up and up and up in cost, it is a burden on our community, on the individual taxpayers. And I think it's beholden on us to try and stay within a budget. We have a half a billion-dollar budget. And I think we just need to work a little harder on staying within that budget.
Thank you. The next question from the audience will go first to you, Candidate Parker, then Candidate Yusef, and then Candidate Cook. As a school board member, how will you respond to parents' concerns about what is being taught in classrooms?
Well, I think my concerns, I feel this concerns the same that they do. I think teaching oppressor-oppressed is divisive. I think it harbors bitterness and resentment. And I think we need to really work on healing and restoration between races. This has been ongoing for, you know, half a century. We need, we just need to find a way to get along with people, you know? That's just not, it's not something that needs to be driven in the schools to segregate people according to race, or according to religion, or according to anything. People are people, and we should be aware of that. You know, if they're not people, then there's no point, which addresses furries and litter boxes in bathrooms in the schools. Then, you know, are we, what are we teaching?
Thank you. Candidate Yusef, your response.
History is there to remember. It's really hard to mend a relationship when you don't understand the whole story. I think what we teach in school is important, but however, it should be the parents that teach character, teach their students how they should understand their education. In school, we can provide scientific facts, what the history is, what happened, different topics. There's diverse amounts of topics. Even in school, we learn about religion, the types of religions there are, but no one's forcing you to follow a specific religion. When I used to come home from home, I used to depend on my parents to explain things to me. How did that happen? Where were you during World War II? How did this happen? And they would explain it to me in their personalized way. As I grew older, I had the ability to make my choices based on the information that I was given. So I think it's a cooperative between the parents and the school, and once again, the legislation. Because ultimately, what we learn is dictated by the legislation. So I encourage people to go out there, learn the agendas, and go out there to vote.
Is there a rebuttal? No? I'm sorry, Candidate Cook.
Thank you. So as far as parents that have concerns about anything in their classroom, my ears are open. As a school board member, I want to hear from you. I want to hear from the community, I want to hear from parents. But I have very little appetite for efforts that are nationwide in scale, certainly present in Minnesota and certainly present in Rochester, to politicize our schools. I care about centering the students. How do we develop critical thinking skills in our students? Provide them with facts, okay? It's actually that simple. It really is. Provide them with facts, empower them to learn their history. The critical thinking skills will follow. That's the role of the schools.
Are there any rebuttals? Candidate Parker.
When we have to have whiteness classes for our schoolteachers to teach summer school, that seems a little objectionable, that, are we teaching, you know, American Indian things? I mean, it's just, why are we focusing on one thing and one race? We ought to be focusing on respect, we ought to be focusing on work ethics, and we ought to be bringing our parents in as volunteers.
Thank you. We have a rebuttal from Candidate Cook.
So this is a terrific example of why a parent's perspective is so helpful. For all of us that are parents of students in Rochester Public Schools, there's no need to explain that there is no such thing as a whiteness class. But look, what we can do is empower our children with facts. Let them learn the history, respect them enough to learn their history. Provide them with facts, critical thinking skills will follow.
Candidate Yusef.
So when you want to understand what kids are being taught, the parents are there. So when you omit or add things, it brings division. What doesn't bring division is having an opportunity to learn what's out there. What can I learn from this experience? We learned a lot from our wars, we've learned a lot from our history. But that's not just one race, that's collective history. And our students need to have those critical thinking skills, and which I agree with Candidate Cook. Because if you understand the facts, you're able to think critically and make decisions that are better for the community. This country is a country of freedom, so exercise that freedom and learn to listen to others. That's all I'm going to add.
Candidate Parker, we only allow one rebuttal per question, so you have your rebuttal. Thank you. The next question comes from the audience, and Candidate Yusef, you will go first, followed by Candidate Cook, and then Candidate Parker. What programs would you reduce or cut if additional revenue is not available to balance the budget?
If we had to keep anything, I think over the years, I think services and mental health, disability, and opportunity for students is important. Yes, we have a lot of capital projects, a lot of buildings, and we have different types of staff. And I think it's time we look to look at the areas that have been underrepresented, and we want to focus on those specific understerved communities. But these services are not limited to them. So when you have an issue on social media as a student, and someone said a few words to you, they talked about your weight, they talked about your gender, what do you do? As a student, you should have the opportunity to go to a counselor, a therapist that is provided by the school system, and figure out ways to navigate that. That's why I advocate emotional intelligence again. And students will feel, hey, yes, this happened to me, but how should I handle this? This prevents a bigger problem than we've seen in the news recently. And it's one step, it's not a foolproof solution, but going in that direction is an investment for our students, rather than our buildings and infrastructure.
Yes, Candidate Cook, your response.
You know, this is a tough one because there, the exercise to trim excess from the budget, from the operating budget in particular, which is where the pain is. The capital budget's kind of its own thing and doesn't require this sort of ongoing investment. But the, you know, there isn't a lot of room to cut in ways that would be invisible to our students and to our families. And so it's just premature for me to pick out some programs right now. But I would be adamant and insisting on a robust budget reduction process to allow our community to understand the stakes, allow their voices to be heard, and to understand what the potential alternatives are to cutting those programs.
Candidate Parker, your response.
Well, I think before we start cutting programs, maybe we need to look at where we can cut inside more. Things like some of these schools that have been closed to reopen new schools. What's the option to maybe sell off some of that property and regain that to put against the deficit? There's plenty of rooms and schools in here, and I don't think, unless we keep adding more and more administration that we're doing, then what do we need more of empty schools for? So I would look to those things first, and then maybe see what we would need to cut once that's all flushed out.
Thank you. Are there any rebuttals?
I'm out.
You're out. Okay, that concludes the question portion of our forum. And we will now hear the closing statements from our candidates. Candidate Yusef will go first, followed by Candidate Cook and Candidate Parker. So Candidate Yusef, thank you.
As many of you know, we live in Rochester, and we have the Mayo Clinic, and we have Destination Medical Center coming up. The views that I'm about to say are only my views and not the views of the Mayo Clinic. But as a patient, as a patient and taking service in Mayo Clinic, they always prioritize the patient. And they strive from the higher levels to the lowest level in all of the departments. And that produced a world-class health system. Now, what I want to do is make sure our education system has the model, students come first. When that happens, it changes the culture and the way of thinking and addresses the issues of this group. In one of my research projects, I looked at disciplinary rates across the state of Minnesota. And about 30 to 40% of the population in Minnesota are diverse in nature, American Indian, African-American, et cetera. However, they account for almost 60 to 70% of disciplinary rates. And having an opportunity to change the narrative and culture about not trying to just discipline a kid, trying to get him out of the classroom, trying to get him to other areas, what we want to focus on is changing the culture and saying, hey, we're here to teach the student. He got in trouble, he's having a hard time with the teacher. What factors are influencing this behavior, is it at home? Should we provide services at home, is it the teachers are not diverse enough? When we start asking those questions, we will be able to succeed. And I think Mayo Clinic is a great example of how to do that to patients. And I'm very confident the Rochester Public Schools can do the same as well.
Thank you. Candidate Cook.
Thank you. If I'm elected to the school board, I will bring a parent's perspective, I'll bring a lawyer's zeal, and I'll bring my passion for public education. I just, I have this vision, I know the capacity is there in Rochester to do better than we are. I will focus intently on achieving reading proficiency by the end of grade three for every single student in our school system. 50% is unacceptable, 65% statewide before the pandemic was unacceptable, 80% is unacceptable, 90% would make us head and shoulders above any other district in the state, and I would still be unsatisfied. Every single student reading proficiently by the end of grade three. The science is in, the tools are available, we need to aggressively deploy them. It will be a game changer. It will change the amount of behavioral supports required by students in middle school. It will be such a worthy investment, and it will make us the envy of the state, of the nation. It is something in our capacity to do. I've been a community-engaged volunteer in PTSAs in the Rochester Public School Foundation, the NAACP, coaching multiple sports. And I have four kids in the Rochester Public Schools. I'm all in. We can do this. Make sure that you vote on August 9th. Make a plan right now, go to mnvotes.org and figure out if you're registered. If you're not, register. If you want an absentee ballot, request one. If you don't know your polling place, figure it out. And find a friend, and bring them too. Everyone should vote on August 9th. It's important. Act like your future depends on it. And lastly, if you want to know more about me, go to justinmcook.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Parker.
Yes, well, I have seen the scores as well. Our grads have test scores that are frighteningly low, and we can do better. And we have to come to kind of find out exactly why they're so low. What's the roadblock to this? Because, you know, we have to bring this up to an academic excellence that's not even been seen here before. Because academic excellence is going to empower our children to compete in a global economy and a world job market. And that's what we want, for our students to succeed, for our children to have safe environments and have the education that we can provide for them, to get along with people, to know how to act and work hard. It's doable. So to me, ignorance is not bliss. We need to educate better than what's happened, at least recently. Thank you for listening, and thank you for hosting. Thank you for coming out tonight. And please consider me when you go to vote for school board seat two on August 9th and again on November 8th. So, thank you. My name is Ray Parker. If you have any questions or wish to donate, you can go to my website at foryourchildren.org. Again, that's the number for, yourchildren.org.
Thank you, candidates, each and every one of you, for participating in tonight's forum. And thank you for your service to our community and your willingness to participate in running for office. All right, Candidate Yusef, you have a rebuttal.
I just want to address a question. Why are our scores low? Why are our students suffering? I think it comes down to being close-minded and open-minded. Being open-minded and seeing issues is different than closing off ideas. And that's what we can excel at. You can also go to abdolaisu.com, you can learn more about my journey, and come on August 9th.
Thank you. I would like to remind everybody that the views expressed tonight are those of the candidates, not the league or our partners and sponsors for the forum. I again would like to thank the Post Bulletin and the Chamber of Commerce and the Rochester Public Library for all the help they've provided here. And there have been several mentions of this, but I would ask everybody to take one of these brochures. It has information about our forums, but it also has information about the primary voting on August 9th and the general election information will come later for November. Remember to vote, and we wish you all a very pleasant evening and a safe drive home.